My name is Linda Hofela. I'm the Board Secretary, Business Administrator. When it's a reorganization meeting, we technically do not have a Board President to preside over the meeting, so I will preside until a Board President is elected. So I will call the meeting to order. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to announce the final election results, which are posted in your agenda. Robert Magaziner received 1,191 votes. Michael Greenberg received 978 votes. Sharice Richardson received 1,299 votes. Ruth Byer received 1,246 votes. Claire Berkowitz received 686 votes. The elected Board members are seated at the table at this time. They are Ruth Byer, Robert Magaziner, and Sharice Richardson. And I will now administer the Oath of Office, which you have each received, and I would like you to repeat after me. So Ruth, Robert, and Sharice could just bring the microphones to you and just all repeat after me at the same time. Okay? It's just a lot quicker that way. I do solemnly affirm
I do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States
and to the governments established in the United States
and this state under authority of the people
and this state under authority of the people
and I do affirm that I possess the qualifications
and I do affirm that I possess the qualifications
prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education
prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education
and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office
and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter
pursuant to RS-19:4-1. 4-1? Okay. Okay, we'll skip that one. And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense
and I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense
listed in NJSA 18A12-1. You don't have to repeat that. I take this oath of office notwithstanding
I take this oath of office notwithstanding
that results of the criminal history background investigation may not yet be available
that results of the criminal history background investigation may not yet be available
and acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation
and acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation
to submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check
to submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check.
Welcome to the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like each of you to sign the oath, and there is a second copy that I'm going to ask you to sign, and I will sign each of them also. You'll get to keep one fully signed copy at the end of the meeting. Now that we have a fully seated Board, I will take the roll call. Ms. Versa? Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Here.
The next order of business is to elect the President. I will call the roll in alphabetical order. As your name is called, please respond by indicating your nomination and supporting vote for the Office of President.
Linda?
Yes.
Let's see if we did it last year. Last year, we just called for nominations.
I did. All right. I'm reading from a script. Apologize. If everyone would prefer to just nominate someone, that would be fine. Is that what everyone prefers to do? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then I'm calling for someone who would like to nominate someone as President.
I'd like to nominate Darcy Simorusti.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seeing that there are no other nominations, I will call a roll call. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Simorusti, for president. At this time, we're going to have to do a little bit of musical chairs. So Ms. Simorusti would sit on the other side of Dr. Taylor, so
Thanks, everybody. So the next order of business is to elect the Vice President. Are there any nominations for the Vice President position?
I would like to nominate Ann Gowan.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
And are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing as there's no other nominations, Linda, could you do a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Gowan.
And the next item on the agenda is the discussion and signing of the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest, and Linda takes care of that.
The Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest are basically the rules for Board of Education members to follow. It guides them in how to conduct the business of being a Board Member. The first thing, the Code of Ethics, I'm not going to read it. You all hopefully have had a chance to read it. You received it before the break. It discusses the fact that you are going to enforce and follow the laws and rules set forth by the Board of Education, that your goal will, your decision-making will be geared toward the best interests of the welfare of the children, the limitations of your Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, the responsibilities that you have with regard to your fellow Board Members, and basically what the administrators do and what the Board Members do. When you, when the new Board Members attend, new Board Member orientation, I believe that the New Jersey School Board Association will go into this in further depth to help you to understand that better. Conflicts of interest, basically, a Board Member cannot use their position to influence decisions of the administration with regard to purchasing, hiring, any actions to benefit a member of their family, immediate family, or if they have particular business organization or activities of their own that they would benefit from. So a Board Member cannot use their office to, for personal gain or for gain of a family member. So that's kind of a framework of Conflict of Interest and Code of Ethics. It is required that you sign a, I gave each of you a hard copy of the Code of Ethics, and on the other side of the paper is the Conflict of Interest statement. I also gave you a sheet of paper, which I need you to sign, that says that you received it and that you've read it, and I need that back. And that's it.
You want us to do those now?
If you would, that would be great, if you, just by the end of the meeting.
So number 10 on the agenda is, 10 and 11 are appointing people. One is the Delegate for the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the second is the Delegate for the Middlesex County School Boards Association. Last year, I was the Delegate for the New Jersey School Boards Association, and I'd love to stay in that position. Our Board had the only resolution that was adopted at the last Delegate Assembly, which was, which was very exciting. It's the first time that I know of in recent memory that the Boards even had a resolution at the Delegate Assembly, let alone to get one through. So that was a very exciting update. So I'd like to stay as the Delegate, and last year, Michelle, you were the alternate, if you're, you're okay with sticking as the alternate. Okay. So I will remain as the Delegate to the School Board, New Jersey School Boards Association, and Michelle will be the Delegate. We do need somebody to be the Delegate for the Middlesex County School Boards Association. Is there anybody that feels any particular urge to fill that position? Kind of everybody jumping. Rob, you were the alternate last year.
Yes, I'll step up.
Rob will step up. I like that.
I'd be happy to be the alternate if you
Excellent. Okay. And Linda, do we have to, like, as I do these, can we then just vote on, like, 10 through, what, 13 as a block?
Yes.
Okay.
If everyone is in agreement.
And 14, right? All the Board Appointments? And then that gets us to the Superintendent's Report. Does that work? Okay. So if there are any objections, I'd like to move items 10 through 14?
Point of order.
Nope.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
You should ask someone to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would someone like, like to move items 10 through 14?
I would like to move those items.
Well, thank you, Ann. Would someone like to second those items? Excellent. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Okay, great. And so that brings us to item 15, which is the Superintendent's Report.
I just have one item listed and one I'd like to throw out there. The item listed is a recommendation to the Board that it approve the NJQSEC Statement of Assurance. It's an annual requirement that the Department of Education holds districts to meeting. This is a series of worksheets that we have to complete to assure we're in compliance in four areas: governance, operations, personnel, curriculum, and instruction. The other item I want to add to the agenda is something that came my way this morning. So Irving School is turning 100 as of Friday, the 8th, and we will be having a party with students and the, some of the parents who are helping out and volunteering. The Board was invited to that event. There will be more events forthcoming that you'll be hearing about, that the entire community will be invited to partake in. I do want to list a couple of facts that came my way, which I thought were very interesting, about the Irving School. It was conceived January 8th, 100 years ago, due to a special election, and at that time, a lot was approved for $1,750 purchase. It was a four-room schoolhouse with two teachers and a female principal. So we've grown somewhat over our three years' time. The students will be asked to wear the attire of the period on Friday, and they've been learning about famous figures in different areas from that era, the early 20th century. So Mrs. Freeborn and her crew are turning the event into a history lesson of sorts. That's all I have.
Great. So item 16 is public comment. And the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 0164 and 0167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings.
Kim Bevelakwa Crane, speaking as the First Vice President of the HPEA. First, I would like to congratulate all of our new Board Members, and congratulations to Darcy on her presidency. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that we had a leadership change in HPEA. I have stepped down from the presidency, which was a planned transition, to spend more time with my family. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work with all of you who sit here today, to bring us back to the wonderful place that, that we deserve to be in now. So thank you for your confidence, your patience, your time, your leadership, your service. And I, we have appointed Keith Presty as the HPA President. He's been in training for several months, taken all of the required workshops, but he has an innate sense of leadership and is going to be awesome in the position. We're really excited about it. I will continue on as First Vice and be at your service as usual. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to ask a question about long-term subs. I understand that a lot of teachers did go out unexpectedly, but my son's teacher only went out a week early, and as of before the break, there was no sub in place, and I was just wondering if you have any idea how long that might take.
When we have a maternity replacement position open, we advertise to find somebody who can fill that position from as wide a pool as possible, from outside the school district as well as inside this district. There are times, as is the case right now at one of our schools, when a teacher will have to leave earlier than expected, at which point we may have to hire a long-term sub for two, one, two, or three weeks, preferably no longer than that, so we can have the Board approve somebody, who we recommend, for the permanent position. We are fortunate to be working with a group that has procured fairly high-qualified candidates sourced for teachers. So when we do have an extended period of time in that gap, two, one, two, three, four weeks, three weeks, let's try not to go to four weeks, we will ask that organization to submit the credentials of folks who are certified in the area, and then we will actually interview among that pool, even if it's just for that, that period of one to three weeks. So I hope that, that at least clarifies the situation for you.
It does. It's just my son, happens every year, his teacher goes out on maternity leave, and this time, there is no sub in place, and some of the other parents asked me to speak and ask about
It's a very valid question.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Hi, David Copperman, 120 Hill Street, and Highland Park, Board of Education, 2004 to 2010. Welcome and thank you to the new Board Members. Over the past few years, I've been a sort of bemused observer at a distance of events here in this forum, so I want to draw some attention to a couple of policy questions. For those of you not familiar with the Policy Manual, it is essentially a contract between the community and the district, and been lost sight of in some ways in, in recent times. I want to ask a question about, first off, the policy you mentioned, 0164, Conduct of Meetings. I read it over the weekend, and it shows that the two periods of public comment had been restored. It was a longstanding procedure here, that there were two periods of public comment. It was reduced to one for a period of time. The two have been restored, but the way the policy reads right now, first public comment happens after committee reports. Now, this is an unusual agenda tonight, so I can't really tell if that'll be followed or not. I'd urge that you take a look at that policy, and if indeed I read it correctly, that first public comment should be moved to in front of committee reports. Very, very important that the community be invited in, that their participation be welcomed. And committee reports are very often pro forma, necessary, but sort of boilerplate activity. So if people have to sit through that, I think they'll feel less welcome, but I'm very pleased that the two periods of public comment are, have been returned. Second thing is, I want to draw attention to Policy 1110. This is from the Administration section of the Policy Manual. And again, in this question of contractual relationships between the community and the district, Policy 1110 provides the organization chart of the administration. It has not been updated in a very long time, and it shows that the administration has, at the top level, one Superintendent and one Assistant Superintendent. In the past two and a half years, we've had periods of one Assistant Superintendent, two, and then none. And effectively, we've been out of compliance with that policy for two and a half years. I really want to urge to the Board and anybody else who listens that that matters a great deal, because the Policy Manual serves both as a contract and as a guide to people who come in with all kinds of different experience and backgrounds to this job, and, and need to take the Policy Manual as guidance and responsibility. This is, for those of you who haven't been through it yet, this is the first thing you'll hear from the New Jersey School Boards Association when you take your Board Training. Everything is policy. And I'm very interested on this question of whether Dr. Taylor intends to hire, you know, to recruit an Assistant Superintendent or not, but primarily, the message to the Board is that you're out of compliance with the Policy Manual, and that now have been for some time. Use it as guidance to how you're going to proceed on this question. With that also, parenthetically, is this, one of the things that occurred over the, during the past two years, is that a prior Superintendent hired a data analyst, something that I never understood at all in a district of 1,500 people, 1,500 students, what $109,000 a year data analyst was for. I never saw a job description, I never heard of that person's activity. And I heard recently that, at some point within the past year or so, he left, and that role hasn't been replaced. If the role still exists on the books, I urge you all to question why, what's it for? If it's not for anything, get rid of it, and so forth. This is, you know, critical to your, to what you're here for. Lastly, in keeping with the question of, of policy and procedure, I happened to look, I was, I was looking at meeting minutes to try to understand that question of when does public comment occur, and I noticed that the most recent Board Agenda, Board Meeting Minutes posted on the district website are from September 21st. The Agendas are all up to date, as far as I can tell, all of the meetings through tonight, all of the agendas have been posted, but the meeting, the meeting minutes now are about three and a half months late. So I think you all want to take a look at that. Thank you very much.
Keith Presty, speaking as the President of the Highland Park Education Association. Thank you. I just want to say that I am honored and excited to be taking over for Kim and picking up where she left off. I want to congratulate the new Board Members and Darcy on her presidency, we're presidents at the same time, right? And I just say that I'm really looking forward to working with Dr. Taylor and everybody on the Board to move things forward and to, you know, make sure that our students have the best education they can here in Highland Park. So thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. So seeing none, the, the next item on the agenda, as David pointed out, which is after the public comment, is the Board Action Items, which there are none this evening. And so then it next, it's the President's Report, and the first thing that we need to do is to assign everyone to committees. So let's take care of that. So the first committee is the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction, and I was hoping, Michelle, that you'd be willing to not only stay on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, but that you would be willing to chair that committee?
I would be very happy to.
Wonderful. And Ruth, I was hoping with your vast knowledge of education, that you would be willing to be on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee as well. Wonderful. All right, sorry. So then on, we're going to leave one empty seat for right now in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and we're going to move on to Finance and Facilities. And Rob Rosslevich, I was hoping you would stay on the committee and be willing to chair it?
Yeah, I will.
Wonderful. And Rob Magaziner?
Happy to.
Come and join us.
Wonderful.
And I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'm going to stay on the Finance and Facilities Committee. Because it's never a committee I saw myself on, but now that I'm there, I certainly see its importance, and as we move through this year, I'd, I'd really like to, like to stay there, so that's where I'm staying. And then for Personnel and Communications, Sharice, I would love if you would be on Personnel?
Absolutely.
And actually, I haven't asked you this. What would you think of chairing Personnel Committee?
I would do it.
You would do it? Wonderful. And then we'll have Ann on the Personnel Committee, since she's going to have her hands more than full, I don't know if she needs to chair another committee. Okay, awesome. And then what do we do about policy? Do we not do that today? When, how does, when does that happen?
The Vice President is the Policy Chair
Right.
And typically, each committee appoints a person
Okay.
And typically, each committee appoints a person to represent that committee. It's often the chair, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay, so we don't need to do that this evening?
Doesn't have to be tonight.
Okay. And then we also go through, not only our committees, but all of our liaison positions. And this is something that I've been talking about for, I feel like, as long as I've been on the board. I feel like these, these positions are really important. These are our lifelines out to the community and to the different groups in the community. So I really want to make these positions, kind of solidify them. And I would like to ask that the people who are appointed to these positions not only commit to attending whatever meetings those groups or committees hold, but that they also report back to the board on a regular basis. So my hope would be that people not only report back at meetings verbally, but that also we get a little, a short, you know, it doesn't have to be anything terribly elaborate, but just kind of somewhat of a framework of what happened at the meeting. And if for whatever reason, if a liaison can't attend a meeting, that they go out to their fellow board members and say, hey, I'm not going to be able to attend this meeting, is there somebody that could go in my place? Because I really want the community, the borough, all these different vital organizations in town to, to feel like the board is also a vital instrumental part of our community. So as, as we select people for these positions, I want people to really think about positions that really suit them, that they're really invested in, and that they'd be willing to attend all meetings, or find a replacement, and then come back and report, report back out to the board. So the first one that's on our list is the Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance. I remember last year, we just didn't fill this, and it was kind of, it just seemed to kind of be a little bit brushed off. So I've reached out to Suzie Wolkowitz, who's the Council President, and she put me in touch with the person who is, who runs the Municipal Alliance, and I'm going to try to figure out a little bit more about what this position actually is, if they do want a board liaison or not, and if so, I mean, if it's okay, I want to kind of leave that one for now, since I don't really know anything about it, and nobody was in it last year. And then we can, we can figure that out last, at the next meeting. And then number five is Liaison to the Cable TV Advisory Committee, which, we have Brian Humphrey on the agenda, and Brian, who is our technology person of the district, has always been a part of that, and then I, for the last two years, have also been a part of that. But I had a chat with Mr. Hirsch, who's here with us tonight, who's the, the Chair of the Public Information Committee, and he asked that that position and the liaison to the Borough Public Information Committee position kind of be morphed into one. So Linda, can we, can we go ahead and do that, and maybe, should we just consider that still the liaison to the Public Information Committee? Does that work without adding or slash HPTV, maybe?
I think it's been that way so far.
Yeah, well, no, well, yes and no. I mean, Michelle has been the liaison to the Public Information Committee, so she's been doing that, and I've been doing the cable TV, but I agree with Matt, I think it makes sense to kind of just morph that into, into one position.
Is Borough wanting it into something?
Well, I, the HPTV is, is under the Public Information Committee, so it is, in terms of the borough, it is. So I got a chance to chat with Michelle quickly before the meeting, and she said she'd be okay staying on as liaison to the Borough Public Information Committee, so she'll...
Yes, I would.
Excellent. And then the Public Library.[826.51][826.51](LAUGHING). Michelle?
Yeah, I would love to. The library is my favorite place in town.[833.32][833.32](LAUGHING).
Oh, did I miss the Ed Foundation? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, I did not mean to miss the Ed Foundation. Sorry. Number six is the, is the Ed Foundation, and Rob?
Yes.
I thought that would be a fantastic spot for you.
I agree.
Okay, awesome.[854.23][854.23](LAUGHING). So Rob is going to take over the Ed Foundation position, and Liaison to the Commission for Universal Access. This is a position that Catherine Bull had, I believe, for the last few years running. I don't know a tremendous amount about it. Is this, is this something that...
I fucking don't know a whole lot about it myself.
Yeah. Unfortunately, not right now. You could come up and tell us more during public comment, the next public comment.
They meet to discuss ways to make the town more accessible.
Sure. Well, I do want to leave a couple of positions open right now, so I'm thinking maybe I might leave that position open for the...
Catherine Bull, that was the first one, right?
Yeah, yeah, she did, that's what I said. Yeah, yeah, it was Catherine. So for right now, I think I'm going to leave that, leave that open. And then Michelle will do the Public Library, and Linda, you're there for the Shared Services Liaison, and is, then there's generally a board member that's also on that, and is that typically the board president? I mean, I know it was last year, or is that...
It doesn't have to be.
Could be anybody.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to do that, and actually, I'd be interested to do that, so I think I'll, I think I'll put myself there. And then we come to negotiations, which, let's see, and we need a chair, and we need, so we need three, a chair and an alternate, correct? I think for now, I'm going to...
Three, including a chair.
Three, including a chair, and then an alternate, right. So with our board formation as it is right now, we're actually in an interesting position where we actually only have three people right now who can be on the Negotiations Committee, so this one is very easy, I don't have to do a lot of thinking. So that, Michelle with her hands up again. So that puts Michelle on the Negotiations Committee, Ann on the Negotiations Committee, and Rob Rosslevich on the Negotiations Committee. And for anybody who doesn't know the reason the rest of us can't be on the Negotiations Committee, is because we either are teachers, or married to teachers, or living with teachers, so we, who are all part of the union, and if you're that close to somebody in the union, you do not get to negotiate a contract, so...
She'll be chair.
And so we have to figure out who's chair. Ann, are you...
Sure.
Yeah?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Rob Ross, that's the senator. Is he okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Don't step on him.
And Liaison to CPAC, I...
A what?
If you don't mind, can...
Whatever. We put it to me over... Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and we already took care of Public Information Committee. And Parents of Students' Color. Yes.[1020.01][1020.01](LAUGHING). And, and then there's one that's not on our list, but that we did have a liaison to last year, which is the Human Relations Committee. So if we can, we can add that, and Ann, you wanted to stay in that?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Position, right? And I think that takes care, takes care of everything, right? And we do or do not have to, do we have to do a roll call on that? No? 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 Okay. Which brings us to old business. Do any board members have any old business that they want to discuss? Nothing? Okay. So under new business, we have one item on the agenda, which is the Annual Board Meeting Calendar. Did any board members have any, did everybody get a chance to look at the calendar? Did anybody have any thoughts or comments or concerns or...
There's one meeting in April that's during the week of Passover. It's not on the part of the holiday that you cannot drive or whatever.
Right.
I don't know how else to explain it, but it is during the holiday.
Right.
It's a little, maybe a little iffy. It's not such a good...
I did have an opportunity to talk to Rabbi Daniel Lowe at RPRY, so he vetted the calendar for us, and I asked him the same question, because I'm observant as well, and he agreed that, he doesn't see it to be an issue, because it doesn't fall on the first two nights.
Although people may be away, that's an issue. I don't know.
April...
And, I mean, what makes it all the more important is that, that's what we're designating as the public hearing on the budget.
Yeah, I think that...
So it...
That should be changed, yeah.
Well, we do have a, what's the deadline? It's, it's coming up soon after that date, so we would have to work around the DOE deadline.
The next meeting is May 9th.
Could it be another day beside Monday?
Ah, yes, we talked about that.
I think that's the whole week.
I think that whole week.
I think that's your first week of, the first day of Hola Moa, which goes the whole week. I don't know, I didn't bring a calendar.
What about the 18th? Is that, um...
What? That may be before it.
Is that before it? Can we just move it a week earlier?
May 8th, which is a Sunday.
May 9th would have to be the Monday.
We're still trying to look at it by the date, but it does appear to be the first week of May.
What about April 18th?
May 5th. April 25th to May 5th.
So April 25th to May 1st is our window.
For what?
To...
To have, hold the budget hearing?
We can't move it earlier?
And have the board approve the budget, so we can submit it to the Department of Education.
Starts the 22nd and goes until the 30th, so what did you say, the 18th?
I mean, I was suggesting the 18th, but maybe that doesn't give Linda enough time to...
No.
Legally, the earliest date that you can have a public hearing is Monday, April 25th.
Ah, I see.
And the last day you can possibly have it is Monday, May 9th.
Hmm. So can we do that, May 9th? I mean, we have a meeting scheduled, May 9th. Does that...
You can, but if there are any reasons why the board is not ready to vote on it, then you're out of time.
Right.
So the 2nd?
And you said the 19th was the earliest date?
No.
No, the 25th. The 25th, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, something that we tossed around at the board table a lot last year was having a public hearing on the budget that was separate from the board calendar anyway, so I wouldn't be opposed to keeping this as our board calendar, and then picking another date that's our hearing on the budget.
Ruth, what's the last date of Passover?
The 30th.
It's a Saturday.
See, your computer's a lot faster, it's not a Chromebook.[1268.83][1268.83](LAUGHING).
We could be looking at Monday, the 2nd of May, or Tuesday, the 3rd of May.
I like the idea of making it Tuesday, just to switch it up a little bit.
Just a reminder to the board, that is the last date at which we can, on which we can discuss the budget.
Okay.
Because we do have to have it approved at that point, or not, in which case we have to appeal to the Department of Education, that becomes an issue.
Have fun with that.
Yeah, let's not. I like the idea of the budget hearing, separate and apart from the actual decision-making budget meeting, you know, the hearing that you were just referring to.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we need a special meeting decision on that tonight, but we could, I guess, since we're all here.
Once again, I'm confused. There needs, we have to submit it to DOE by what date? By...
If I may comment, we will be having a lot of discussions during the months of March and April. The last date that we can have a public hearing to vote on the budget is May 9th.
I see.
It has to be submitted to the DOE after that.
And you were saying that May 2nd is the last day of what? I thought, I thought you referred to May 2nd being a final day of something.
No.
But I misheard, I'm sorry.
I think that May 2nd was the date that they were saying the budget hearing could be possible.
Right, and then the 9th would be the vote. Right.
No, 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 your budget hearing is your public hearing, and then the budget is adopted.
Ah, I see.
You can have, you can have discussions during board meetings.
Right.
So...
Right, and, I mean, I think we're fully anticipating that we're going to have multiple discussions leading up to, you know, this isn't going to be a, you know, a kind of budget process where we just have two meetings and then we're done, so...
But that still is the official approval by the board of that budget, which we need to do, and designate that in advance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but we have, we have the meeting on May 9th, where that can be, that can be done, so if we have this public hearing before then, then we still have plenty of time to...
The date of the public hearing is the date that the board adopts the final budget.
Oh, okay.
So is, was May 2nd out, just shifting it by one week?
Sounds good to me.
I was just proposing that as a potential meeting date. Might be a viable option. People should be back from holiday if they're away for Passover break.
Yeah. So that would be three Mondays in a row. That would be the 25th, the 2nd, and the 9th.
The 2nd is the...
May 1st.
Okay.
Or we can move, can we not move the 25th meeting to the 2nd?
Could you do that?
So that we don't have consecutive, consecutive weeks?
Might read it out, that's just the same number of meetings.
Because I think we will also be having additional meetings to talk about the budget.
Yeah, we absolutely will. There'll be additional committee meetings, there'll be additional, all kinds of meetings, so that works for me. Can we move the 25th meeting to the 2nd? Does everybody think that makes sense?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, absolutely, yep. Thank you.
May I just give the community a two-minute skinny version of what's going to happen with the committee process?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what we'll be doing this year regarding the budget is, beyond what Linda and I have already done, which is to meet with every individual responsible for building a budget separately for between one- to-two-hour meetings, we will be having the leadership team individually come to Finance and Facilities Committee meetings over, I think we've scheduled something like three meetings time, to present the budget that they're responsible for developing to the Finance and Facilities Committee. So the Finance and Facilities Committee will actually have an opportunity to line by line ask questions about the rationale behind our expenditures, proposed expenditures. And then the Finance and Facilities Committee can bring its, its work to the full board, and at that point, you can have as many meetings as you wish, leading up to the final meeting that we're deciding will be May 2nd.
Okay. Sounds fantastic. So, and so do we need to vote on the calendar, or... We do. All right, so does anybody have any other questions or concerns with the board meeting calendar? Yeah, yeah, we'll do that after you do this.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay, so if no one has any other concerns about the, about the calendar, then can I get a motion to, do I just ask for a motion to adopt it, or...
Just, just for clarification, I want to make sure I understand. We are changing April 25th to May 2nd.
Correct. As the public hearing on the budget.
And there will not be a meeting on April 25th, I think?
No, we're just changing that date. So that gives us only one meeting in April, but three meetings in May. Happy May, everybody.
I remember during our campaign, two years ago now, a year ago, sorry, there was a lot of discussion of changing board meetings to a different night occasionally, because Monday seems to be a night where most people who attend night classes have to, you know, be out, and various other examples were given. So is that something that we want to discuss? Is it...
I mean, I think once we adopt a calendar, and we have a calendar, we can change meeting dates at any point if we want to, right? Or...
Well, we will be publishing this schedule of meetings in the newspapers, posting it on our website. As long as it's far enough out, I would think that a change can be announced and wouldn't confuse people.
Or could we even potentially, say, adopt half of it now, and then plan the other half of it? I mean, because I do agree with Michelle, that was something that we've talked about a lot, about changing meeting nights and actually locations as well, was something that we had discussed, to, you know, have different events at different schools, with students, I mean, and this is something that the board used to do on a regular basis. We'd be at Irving for, you know, at least one meeting a year, and the Irving kids would do some sort of presentation, and then we'd be at Bartle, and the Bartle kids would do something, or you'd have some sort of recognition. And, you know, I, I would like to kind of put those, put some of those plans in place, so maybe if we just did, you know, even maybe through that, you know, through the budget season, and then we could schedule the rest of the calendar.
Would it be feasible to adopt what you've come up with, and then at the next meeting, update the calendar with new locations, if you choose?
Sure.
So, how's that go for you?
That work for everybody?
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Then we can talk about it.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay. But do we vote on this, and then she could do another?
Sorry.
Okay. So do I just ask for a, a motion to approve the calendar, is that right? Okay, so if there's no other discussion on the calendar, can I get a motion to, to approve the annual board meeting calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the new calendar for 2016.
Wonderful. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roselitz?
Yes.
And did anybody have anything else for New Business?
Yes. We received two communications today from board members Anne Scherber and Jerry Aversa. Anne Scherber notified us that she is resigning from the Board of Education effective immediately. And Jerry Aversa also submitted a letter of formal resignation. I believe it's effective immediately, it doesn't specifically state that, but I believe it is effective immediately. As such, I guess on behalf of the board, I would like to formally offer my regrets and thanks for their service. And also would like to announce the process for appointing two new board members. We will be posting a notice on the district website and in our, the board-appointed newspaper, requesting applications, and if they have, if they would like to submit a resume of some sort, letters of interest for becoming members of the Board of Education, pointing out that in order to become a member of the Board of Education, you need to be 18 years old and a resident of Highland Park, and in good standing as far as criminal history is concerned. We then can decide, the board members can decide if they would like to review the letters of interest or applications at the next board meeting, or whether they'd like to give it a little more time. Typically, at a subsequent board meeting, the board members review the letters of interest, and then, and then schedule a interview session in public at the following board meeting, at which point the candidates may say, you know, give a statement, and then they may be asked questions by the board. After that point, the board goes, recesses to executive session, and deliberates on the candidates, and comes to, comes back into public session, and will vote on the candidates that they would like to appoint. In this case, it would be two people. Those people, those persons would be appointed for a shorter session, a shorter term. They would fulfill, they would fill out, fill the remaining term of that candidate.
Yes, they, and both of those.
So then it's a shorter-term seat.
This is just for the year, and both of those, both of those seats are up in November anyway. So if those people wanted to remain on the board, they'd have to.
They would need to then file a petition with the County Board of Elections for the November election.
Right. And on behalf of the board, I'd also like to thank both Jerry and Anne for their service, and hope that they all come back at the next meeting, where we can do some sort of a board recognition for them, as we've done for other board members, whether they're at the end of their term or resigning. Anne, you had something else for New Business?
Yeah, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I just follow up on what you had said, Linda? I just want to ask one thing. We post the, we post the notice of these two vacancies. Is there a time limit for responses? Do we put?
That's what we need to decide tonight.
Okay, so can we do that now? I'm sorry, Anne, I didn't.
No, no, it's fine, no, no.
Because our next meeting is on the 19th, and then we have another meeting on February 1. I mean, I'd kind of like to give it a couple weeks to get the letters of interest, see what we get, and then, I mean, can we maybe schedule it for the first that we, we do the interviews? So we have a couple weeks to get the, get people's resumes and information, and then we have a couple weeks to review it, and then bring people in on the first for interviews. Does that sound good to everybody, or anybody have any? February 1, I'm sorry, what did I say?
No, you said the first, I was just clarifying.
Okay, February 1, yeah. Does that, that sound like a reasonable process?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as far as a cutoff goes, we could, we would be posting tomorrow. We could have them do on the 19th, in the, say, 10 o'clock in the morning or something, so we could at least provide the board with information on the candidates. Or if the board would like to just leave it open longer, then they would just get a list of the candidates before the February 1 board meeting.
I think that's fine. I think the two weeks should be more than sufficient. I mean, I think that gives us then a little bit of time to, to review them, and.
So just for the public certification, we will be posting the announcement on the district website, in the newspaper, Home News Tribune, of the vacancies, board vacancies. They will need to submit a letter of interest by February, by January 19, 10:00 a.m. in the business office. And then the interviews would take place on February 1.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you, Anne, I'm so sorry.
Thanks. I just had something in my capacity as, excuse me, liaison to the Borough's Human Relations Commission. The day before our next meeting is Martin Luther King Day, and the commission is, has organized its annual, let me get the name right, Martin Luther King Junior Awards Dinner slash humanitarian awards program. It's basically a big Martin Luther King event. It is going to be at 7 o'clock at the high school auditorium, and they have an incredibly exciting speaker. It's going to be Sarah Collins Rudolph, who is the, one of the surviving girls at the time of a church bombing in 1963 in Birmingham, Alabama. So it's just amazing that she's going to be able to come and speak to us, and I hope that we'll have a lot of involvement from the school, and our students, and our parents.
Can we actually get something out to families about that? Can we, is there some sort of flyer from the Human Relations?
We will be. Yeah, I'm working with Ashton Burrell and John.
Fantastic. Yeah, no, Dr. Taylor was great about offering up the high school, so we could have that there. I think where they did it last year, I believe, was the Senior Center or someplace. It was a very small location, so we needed a bigger place. Elsa, very exciting, is that one of our own new board members, Charisse Richardson, is going to be honored with the, I'm not even sure what it's called, the humanitarian award, which is a really big deal for her service to the community. So we're all very excited about that, and we hope the public will come out.
Great, excellent, thank you so much, Anne. Did anybody else have any new business? Charisse got new business.
Yes, I also have an event announcement. Hasn't actually gone up on the web yet. But the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color will be holding a potluck dinner and meeting on Wednesday, the 13th of January, at 6:30 p.m. Kids are welcome, and people can bring their families down, and have an opportunity to meet one another, have a meal, and kind of update and catch up on what's going on with Highland Park Parents of Students of Color.
I'm sorry, did you say where it is, and I missed?
I'm sorry. It will be at the First Reform Church, I'm sorry, Reform Church of Highland Park. Got to get the right town here. Reform Church of Highland Park, South Second Avenue. And it'll be in the quilt room.
Great. And there'll be a flyer, I assume, that you guys can get to the?
Yes.
Get to Central Office to get out to.
And this is the kind of thing that's open to the whole community to come and hear about issues? Or is it mainly intended for people who have children of color?
Anybody who's interested, who would like to come, and find out what's going on. Just bring a dish and come down.
Great, excellent. Thank you guys both so much for that. And Anne, thank you for letting us know about Charisse's award. And it reminds me that, you know, I haven't prepared anything, obviously, but I did want to say a little something under the President's Report, and I didn't, so I'll say a little bit now. I'm just, I'm so excited looking around this table. It's kind of like almost a sense of disbelief. We have this incredible group of people, who I know, every single person sitting at this table is absolutely committed to equity and opportunity for all of the kids in this district. I'm going to get all mushy, this is so. And we're clearly a very young board. I am now the senior member of this board. That's a little frightening, people. I'm in the third year of my first term. We have three people who are in the, the second year of their first term, and now we have three people who are in the first year of their first term. This is a very young board. We have two administrators sitting here with us, who I trust completely to guide us through this process. Linda, who has like sheltered every storm that has come at this district in the last, I don't know how many years, and I'm so glad she's still sitting here with us. And Scott, who is, you know, as new as some of us, but comes to us with a ton of experience, not just as an administrator, but in terms of our community. And I think that's fantastic. I'm so excited to see Keith and Kim back there. Hi, Keith and Kim. I'm so excited that this is, in just a couple years, has turned around to this district where we can all work together, because that's the only way it works. Unless all the, look at Mrs. Rosenfeld's back there, getting all mushy too, I can see her. That's how it works for kids. It works for kids if all the people sitting up here, and all the people in the offices here, and all the people in the union office, we're all on the same page, and we're all working together towards making this an equitable place of opportunity for all kids. So yay, all of us. So the next item on the agenda is Public Comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments. I don't have to say the board policies thing every time, do I? Yay.
Tara Canavera again. And I do apologize for not congratulating the new members, and you, Darcy, and the new president. I'm just curious as to who is going to be working on the budget for special ed. Will the new director have enough time, with her just coming in in February, to get the budget correct for special ed?
It's a great question. So Kathy Watkins House, our interim director, has already put a draft together. But she's been working with Susie Boudin, Budine, I always get her last name wrong, who will also be coming back to us next week, a week from today, to spend the day with Kathy to continue looking at the budget. Now fortunately, Susie will be here February 16. Yes, February 16, the day after we return from President's Break. So we will actually be in the middle of the process, so she'll have plenty of opportunity to do the checks and balances. I don't believe she'll appear before the Finance and Facilities Committee. I have to see how the calendar's going to work out. Kathy will likely do that. But the budget that she presents to the Finance and Facilities Committee will have been a collaborative effort with Susie.
And my other thing was, the Commission for Universal Access meets on Thursday, so if, even though you haven't appointed somebody, if someone would like to come, it's at Borough Hall at 7:30.
Oh, there's a meeting this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I hope you understand now why I didn't appoint someone. I need to leave a couple of.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Have to write my name again?
Yes, if you could.
Okay. David Copperman again. I didn't know it was going to come up again, but I want to say thank you to Darcy for your emphasis on the importance of those liaison roles. And I have a question on one in particular. Scott, do you know approximately how many students we have with IEPs in the district?
With IEPs?
Yeah.
I don't, I think we're at about 12% of our student population, but I don't know the exact number.
So it's down a little bit, about 180, something like that? Okay? It was in the low 200s.
We've got about 1,650 students, so.
Oh, then that's, no one is up, so that's, that's a lower percentage, which is nice to hear. I didn't hear who was the appointed liaison to CPAC?
Ruth.
Ruth, thank you. I would say, and this is from a personal experience as much as anything else, that the board has not really paid enough attention to, historically, or shined enough light on special ed in particular, and ed services in general. I think it's an area that's ill-understood by the public, and I think in the past few years, quite frankly, CPAC has kind of been given short shrift by the board. It's very important, and it's such a, you know, it's challenging enough to be a parent. I happen to be a special ed parent as well. CPAC has the potential to play a fantastic role here, as Tara knows, Coach. So I hope that, you know, you'll take this on very actively, and provide regular readouts at public to what you've learned and what you're hearing from special ed parents through CPAC. Thank you.
Tara Canavera again. I just wanted to let you know, David, that we've been working with Dr. Taylor and with the case managers, and we're going to be having roundtables with the case managers every other month. And we're also working with the board attorneys to have them come and talk about transitioning, guardianship, and those type of things. So the new administration is working very closely with us.
Is there any other public comment? If everybody could indulge me, I forgot one item for New Business. Am I allowed to hop back really quickly before we leave? I promise it won't be terribly long. But a week from today, Monday, what does that make it? Monday, the 13th. There is a State Board of Education meeting in Trenton. It's the first state board meeting of the year, and it's one of only, I believe, three open public comment sessions that the board holds. Normally at state board meetings, there are set topics that you can comment on, but this is one where anybody can go and they can comment on anything. So I have registered as an individual to go and testify before the board, and my intention was to testify about our, our situation with Hatikva and the impending expansion. With the board's permission, if the board thinks it's beneficial to us, I would like to testify on behalf of the board regarding the issues that we're facing with the expansion, and what the impact of the expansion would, would mean on the district. I don't know if anybody has any, any thoughts about that, or any?
I would love to go with you.
Concerns? Come on over, Michelle.
I'm in support, I can't come, but.
Yeah, no, go for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, wonderful. So then I guess that's it, and what do I do to adjourn the meeting? Okay, so I ask for a motion to adjourn? Oh, but do I need, I need to announce the next date and time and all that kind of good stuff? I don't, is there a?
Did everyone get a copy of this? Was this attached to the agendas? Okay, so.
You don't need to announce the date of the next meeting, it's on the list.
I don't, oh, okay, okay.
Which everyone should have gotten.
Okay. All right, so then I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Yay, we did it!